Originated with the SKEPT team, the Successful Children and Youth Policy Team. Dr. Duran and his team met with most of us and many of the Board of Supervisors over the summer and through the early fall to hear your individual thoughts on this proposed policy. Some changes were made as a result of your comments, and today we will discuss as a collective group. Much of what we're hearing is already in parts of our strategic plan, the county's strategic plan, or in vision statements. And remember that this is meant to be an aspirational policy, providing us with a framework to move things forward. And it's our hope to put it on for new business November 9th, action on the board, action by our board on November 20th. The Board of Supervisors will be discussing it on October 31st with a vote on November 21st. Dr. Duran?
All right. This is not intended to be a presentation. This is more of a discussion for the board, as was requested by our chairman on both the school board and the Board of Supervisor side. But I will provide a very quick update since I want to thank everyone. We spent countless hours meeting with all of you and with Board of Supervisors. Most individuals about an average of an hour, up to three hours in one case. So just a quick review of the process. On June 13th, we provided an overview to the joint boards. The SKEPT Executive Committee drafted, looked at the final draft of the policy. We then had a briefing meeting with the board chairs, Chairman Strauss and Chairman Bolova on August 3rd, where we were asked to go and meet individually or in pairs, in a couple of cases on the phone, with both members, with members of both bodies. We did that during the month of August and September. We were able to meet with almost everyone in person and a couple on the phone from both bodies. We also had a legal review done by county and FCPS attorneys. There was our initial draft that was shared, which has been uploaded, that has also some tract changes after meeting with everyone. There were some requests for some changes, and those are all identified there. I'm not going through all of those now, but we did discuss them in great detail when I did meet with, in concert with our county partners. Couple of key themes, and I won't read these to you in lieu of time, but there were five emerging themes that came about from the briefings, and I will, those are there for reference. Next steps to the policy adoption, as was already indicated by Ms. Darnat Kofax, and also want to thank her, and unfortunately, Ms. McLaughlin is not here because the two of them helped us on the school board side in leading this work. So you could see that our hope is that after today, that it would be introduced as new business on November 9th, and then a final vote on November 20th. Simultaneously, you'll see in the middle on the top, the Board of Supervisors process. On October 31st, they will be having a similar discussion. They don't have work sessions, but their Housing and Human Services Committee meeting, they will be reviewing the draft policy as it now stands, which is the one that has all the new changes included. And then their intention, according to Chairman Bolova, is to have a vote on November 21st, which would be one day after. I was asked, after we hear comments from this, from all of you today, if there are any changes, and there are members of this team in the back who I want to recognize, Karen, Shabon, Carla Bruce, Marianne Panarelli, who've played an active, critical role in making this, getting us to this point where we are today, and they're here too, if there's any comments that need to be shared back with the county, so before they go before their October 31st meeting. The only thing I would like to really spend a few moments on is, and Ms. Darnat Kofax already did mention this in terms of this being an aspirational policy, but I did want to say, it's important to say what this is and what this is not. And what's really critical, because you know, we have various policies in both the county and the school district side that mean different things. First of all, this is a new concept around the nation, in that as we looked across, there really are no major county and school districts that have a policy that is joint. There are countless school districts that have equity policies, and countless governments that have, city governments and county governments that have policies, but not a joint one. So by joining together in adopting this policy, it's really a commitment to working together as county and as school with our vision, our goal of what do we think if we lived in a truly equitable Fairfax County? What would that mean? What does that look like for us? That is what the meat of this is in those 17 items that are outlined in the policy. Of important notice also, there is an attachment on board docs, which has a document that's colored, all kinds of different colors. That document is very important because it outlines where each of those 17 items came from. Staff and the working group of many, many individuals didn't just create these out of thin air. We went and the team looked very closely at existing documents, existing policies, existing statements, that things have already been put in place on both the county and the district side. For example, looking at our strategic plan, you'll see items pulled directly from there. Looking at our Early Childhood Plan, you'll see a few items pulled from there. Of those 17 items, 15 come directly from a source document, and you will see on that attachment what, where it came from in the far right columns, you'll see where it came from. The two that did not come from anywhere were an item that was referenced to having digital access for county residents. And that, while it did not come from a direct document, it certainly is in our strategic plan when we think about providing support for our students and our staff in terms of curriculum and in terms of that digital access, hence our FCPS on. The other thing that's important about this policy is that it simply acknowledges that achieving equity is more than just the right thing to do, it's an economic imperative. So this policy did not come to edit, as some do in other jurisdictions, from the moral perspective, or what was right or wrong about why we needed to do this. This spoke to the economic imperative that was needed in looking at the demographic changes that are going to be coming about and are coming about, as we saw even in some of our recent presentations on our demographics in terms of assessments. The third thing is that it builds upon and sustains communities of opportunity across Fairfax County, and that is important as we think about what do our residents need to be able to be successful, to thrive, and live in an equitable place? And the last thing, which is probably to me, the one word that I use when talking about this policy, it's a framework. It's a framework for helping us to have those discussions about, one, what policies do we need to enact? Two, what are things that we have that we're not implementing equitably? Or three, what are some considerations that we need to begin to talk about within our system, across systems, within departments, at individual schools, based on policies or practices? In some cases, both. It does not commit us to saying we have to do X, Y, and Z. It is not commit us to saying, as some have said, you know, does it have quotas in there? We have to get certain percentages. It is not doing that. It is simply putting in black and white, what is our commitment across both bodies that what we'd like to aspire our community to be in 17 key areas? It is also written, if you'll look in that same section of 17, this isn't written in stone, it talks about this is something that can be revisited time and time again. For example, just think maybe 10 years ago, we might not have put in digital access for every student as an equitable outcome, because, think about it, 10 years ago, we didn't rely on technology in the way that we do today. So from a few years from now, there may be other issues that we're not even aware of or thinking about right now. The other last thing I will say, and then really the meat of today, is to hear from you all as a discussion point, is that the 17 items don't mean that we're not already doing some of those. We are doing some in many cases, but are we doing them in all of our county, for all of our residents? Some of them are, for example, the area that came up in many conversations with you was the clean drinking water. Are we saying we don't have clean drinking water in Fairfax County? Well, we're saying that we, that is an item that we would say is example of having an equitable place for everyone to live, doesn't mean we're not already providing clean drinking water to our residents. And so again, I will just summarize and close by saying, the policy is a framework, it is a commitment, and it is a statement based upon economic imperatives for all of our residents, and it is that aspirational vision of where we would like to see all of us be if we truly are an equitable community. And with that, I'll open up to the main part of today, which was questions and/or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Duran. We'll start with Ms. Strauss.
First of all, thank you. I can't imagine, well, I know the SKEPT Committee has worked on this for a long time, and staff was here tonight. Thank you all for your patience, and then you all working with all 12 of the school board members and 10 of the Board of Supervisors to continue to wordsmith. That took huge patience, so thank you very much. And I think it is important, the definitions here, that we're looking at, at access to resources, not necessarily, and again, I'm glad that you said this, this does not mean that there are quotas. I received an email from, from a community member today who was concerned, who felt that if there was access provided to one person of a certain background, that meant that it would be withdrawn to another person of a certain background. And I said, no, that's not it at all. It is, people need transportation to get to work, they need decent housing, they need to make, we need to make sure we have grocery stores in every neighborhood, and as, as the Board of Supervisors do redevelopment projects, or new development, as we have said, is, please don't give us high concentrations of poverty, that it's very difficult to then provide the, the, the kind of resources that everybody needs. So access to parks, to healthcare, to this whole piece of, of makes up the quality of life in Fairfax County. So this isn't about quotas, only certain percentage of children will be allowed in gifted programs, or a certain percentage, et cetera, to highly desired schools. So I am hoping that the community hears that and is not seeing this as a zero-sum game. So anyway, thank you very much. I think that the wordsmithing was excellent, and I also appreciate the fact that we can, we can see where a lot of this comes from, because a lot of it, it exists, and many of our other policies are programs, but the fact that both the school board and the Board of Supervisors are committed to this, this lines up with our joint meetings on budget, on CIP, and the many other areas that we know we have to work together to provide quality of life. So thank you very much for all of your hard work and your incredible patience with all of us that you all had.
It was a pleasure to actually get engaged in these conversations. I want to reiterate what you said, access and opportunity is another driver in this policy. And many, many of you actually, and some of your colleagues on the Board of Supervisor side said, well, where does it say, how are we going to meet those outcomes? What's the number? That's a next step of conversations on a variety of measures that will happen as a result of this, but this does not define what those are necessarily. This says, though, there should be the conversation, and ultimately, as elected bodies, members of elected bodies, whether it's this body or the Board of Supervisors, that's still a decision and votes that you'll be taking, and decisions you'll be making year after year, with this as a frame of reference, a framework, a lens to look through about a commitment that everybody's making to say what equity should be.
That's right. Make sure that we're thinking about all of this when we make decisions, so thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your hard work on this. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. You talk about the accountability framework, and that we will incorporate and publish data and performance measures that can be analyzed, quantified, and disaggregated to evaluate to the extent to which our systems are achieving goals. Do we have a model of what that framework is going to be, or has it been done elsewhere and we can learn from it? Or is this the next step, is to start fleshing out things like our accountability framework and our, what equity tools we'll be applying?
So to answer that question, it is a next step. We have begun to look at some school, well, first of all, as I said a minute ago, this is a county and a school district policy. So there are some, for example, collaboration is best. So there are examples of how school districts have done equity profiles, equity reports, equity scorecards, you can call it a variety of things. So we will begin to look at that. We've also done a little bit of that, though, in what we just presented to you a minute ago, where we broke down by demographics, where we were able to also look at different subgroups. So it's something as simple as that, or it could be something as complex as really looking at an equity report card and equity profile. Many school districts have that. Before we would do any of that, we would come back to this body to have a healthy conversation and discussion about what are some of those, first of all, how would you like that to be presented, and what are those measures? So that is the next step, and we are beginning to look at that. I think the county has also begun to look at some jurisdictions. Dr. Ray Duran has also brought a couple of us to look at in terms of some other jurisdictions that he has seen use those tools. I've begun to look at that. So it is a next step, and it is something that we would all agree upon, what we would publish for those measures, while continuing to do similar reports like we just did that pull out those different profiles.
So what I was trying to tease out was whether or not you see a single accountability framework for the county and the school system, or are you suggesting that we will continue along our parallel paths in looking at equity and accountability to equity metrics? And the reason I ask that is because we saw a study, which was commissioned by the county recently on housing patterns, and that does beg to question a number of ways in which we have done development in the past, and that then has a knock-on effect on how our schools are, you know, the demographics of individual schools. So that's one question that, if you can answer, and then the other question I have, and then I'll be done, is it talks about the One Fairfax Executive Leadership Team, and if you could define who the One Fairfax Executive Leadership Team is, that would be helpful, because we have a policy document, but we don't really define some of these things.
But to your first question, I don't think it's one single document across both jurisdictions, both bodies, that would be an accountability report that we're publishing. However, I do think that there, use your example of housing, that because of this now, there will be inclusion in discussions, and we will jointly look at that data together and begin, and we've already begun to do that as a result of this. For example, looking at the Early Childhood Reports that we did at SKEPT, where we begin to be more partnered with county, community partners, some of the non-for-profit, non-for-profit individuals, and looking at equity in a profile report around services for early childhood. So I don't think it's one that covers everything, is my answer, but I do think that there will be one report for different areas as we begin to work across both boards, both county and school district side. Did that answer your question?
It answers the question. I guess I would suggest that as a follow-up, that we have a list of deliberate interactions between the school board and the Board of Supervisors to have conversations about some of the metrics that are later defined, or the accountability metrics, because that's really where the two boards should be working together in an intentful manner, and also it should inform our budgeting process.
And in all fairness, we could, we could certainly do that, in all fairness to having everything listed, we haven't done that level of what are all the areas going to be? That would be the next step in terms of planning between the two, the two sides. So we could certainly do that, and is what we intend to do as we sit down.
But I would suggest that as a decision by this board, we should actually, as we adopt this policy, we should have as a follow-on resolution, a request to the Board of Supervisors, which would identify specific areas of interaction and joint work going forward, so that it is a collaborative effort going forward.
The answer to your second question, I can provide you a list of who's currently on the executive leadership team, but essentially what it is, it's senior leadership on both sides of the county and the school district, so the cabinet members on our side, as well as, I'm not sure if it's called cabinet on the county side, but deputy leaders on the county side are on the executive leadership team, who will be happy to provide you a listing of who those individuals are. But essentially, it's senior leadership of both sides.
You know, Mr. Darnat Kofax, I think some school board members, I think especially enlarged board members have a commitment, and then that is why I am leaving, not that I wanted to abandon you.
Okay. Someone did we have? I don't think we can. I mean, we, we don't have a quorum at all.
Well, why don't we finish the discussion? We aren't voting on anything but opportunity for questions.
Sure, and we, we will be voting, though.
Yes, exactly.
On November. But we can have a discussion.
This was published in more than three, so.
Right, right.
So I just, I just want to have a point of clarity. I do think that I am the only public official in Fairfax County who did not vote for this, and have expressed my concern all along, that the interpretation of how achieving equity will be applied functionally is a concern, and, and what that means. And Ms. Strauss, you, you identified, it was sort of vague, but I understood where you were going, a question of, and I think many of us got that same email, a question of if we provide something, do we take it away from somebody else? And I, I do think that that's a reasonable concern, I'm going to reiterate it here again, because there are finite resources. And the question is, if you're providing something for somebody, does that ultimately come at a cost? But that's, that's a, that's a financial issue. The real issue I have is the question of what the phrase equity applies to. And we were very fond of the word equity, but it doesn't necessarily mean the same thing to all students. And in an end-of-a-county where I have consistently the highest class sizes, consistently, consistently the largest number of children in a facility, period, so that you wind up having, you know, less square feet per child, less square feet per educator, no space for itinerant teachers to work, no space for special education programs, so students, I'm responding right now to a parent who's practically in tears because their child has to go into an autism program, and the closest one is going to result in their child's transportation going from three, 30 minutes to two hours for an autistic child. So equity is not just, you know, achieving a racial or financial equity. Equity has other meanings, and when, when you have teachers who, every single class in the building is at the highest end of our class sizes, everybody is stressed. Your librarian has the most number of students in the library, getting the least amount of attention. You have an assumption that parents are going to volunteer because there's just more people in the building, and what happens is statistically, you wind up with fewer number of volunteers, and you have larger schools, larger class sizes, et cetera. So I'm very cautious about us sort of little L liberally using the word equity without having an understanding or thought that there may be an inequity that we are not traditionally recognizing, and just because a problem, and I full well acknowledge, I don't have a single Title I school in my district. It doesn't mean that I don't have, that the children, the educators, the families, don't have other issues that are inequitable when you look at things like, you know, a bus ride. You know, I mean, Ms. Evans, your, your district is one-third the size of my district, and so getting a program, you know, at a neighboring school means a five-minute additional ride. You know, I have kids that, you know, it takes 30 minutes to, to get, to go shopping, you know, to, to be able to, to get to a place, there is no public transportation. So I, you know, I, I will continue, if I'm a lone voice in the wind, to advocate for what I would, I don't know what the phrase is, but non-traditional inequities that are never acknowledged as an inequity.
I just want to say, Ms. Schultz, that we completely agree with that in our work, and as we met, as we met with, no, as we met with your colleagues and talked about the definitions, when there is a thing that was added and put in there around neighborhood of residence, and that was particularly around equities that people see in certain parts of the county. It was even discussed in one of the briefings, I forget which one, about transportation and how people having to travel far or looking at things.
Can I just give, can I just, I just feel like I have the opportunity, because we have nothing else to do. Let me give you a very real example. I, I have children that get really stressed when we have the bike-to-school day. They're very upset. They can't bike to school. They can't. There's no sidewalks, they're miles, miles and miles from their school, there's no, and so how do they get recognition? You know, they'll bike to their bus stop because they feel like that that qualifies as a participation. These are very odd and different interpretations of things that we message that are, that frankly, a lot of other school board members don't experience. You don't have the same feedback from constituents that there is a disparity, but they feel invisible.
If I could share, and I know that the hour is getting late, but I do think this will be, Douglas Reeves, who's one of the best educators I've ever gotten to work with, had a statement that great organizations learn about implementation during implementation. I suspect this equity journey that we're beginning will go in ways that the board might predict it would go, and maybe in ways this board and community would never predict it would go. So I, I think there's a chance, I hope everybody around the board and our community gives a chance for this work to begin, to find those common ground areas with the Board of Supervisors, and that doesn't mean every topic is going to be just complete kumbaya, all, everybody together, but I think there may be more opportunities to see, to tell the story from different lenses, and the idea that everybody deserves to have their story told from a lens may end up being one of the most powerful things that comes out of this work. That's what I'm hopeful.
I appreciate that. That was actually very, a very cogent response. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you, and congratulations on the excellent work. I know a lot went into it from a lot of people, and to the, the point Mrs. Schultz just made, I agree, an autistic, a child with autism shouldn't have to go two hours to get to an autism program. And that, that is a matter of, not just a matter of equity, it's a matter of humanity. So if, if that's happening, I would hope we would find a way to, to deal with that child and, and children, children like them. I want to go back to what Mrs. Corbett Sanders talked about, though, in the housing patterns, and I think we, we touched on this here, Dr. Duran, but as you know, I do have a very big concern about socioeconomic resegregation, and I'm, I'm seeing it's sort of addressed here, but not entirely. So if you would tell me where, where we go to in this policy to say we really need to have, have a real conversation and some, some real action plans about involving socioeconomic resegregation?
That would, that would be under Section 4, Number 2, around housing policies that encourage all who want to live in Fairfax, and it goes on and on, so it would really be around that notion, around the housing in Section 4, Number 2.
Okay, I, I am looking at, I have Section 4 up on the screen, and I do see a reference to having a full spectrum of housing opportunities across the county, and that's, that's good. But then we add, most notably, in mixed-use areas that are accessible, accessible to multiple modes of transportation. I hope that's not being seen as a limit to what we're doing, because we, as time goes on, I mean, I think in some of our areas, we are, are seeing this, and we're not seeing a counter to it. We're not seeing a counter to it, and I think it's going to be imperative, we have to do the heavy lifting on this, because nobody, I mean, if we don't do it, then 10 years from now, a board's going to be sitting here with, with seeing some schools getting higher and higher poverty, while others either stay the same or get lower poverty, and I think that that's, that has to do with equal opportunity of education as well. So I, I hope we're, I don't know if there's a way to strengthen the language, if that's part of the, the work plan, but I think we have to have that courageous conversation.
Yes, and, and we certainly, and if you recall in your briefing, we got really detail into that conversation, but those, again, that wording comes directly from the Fairfax County Strategic Plan to Facilitate Economic Success, and so it wasn't meant to weaken that, it was trying to capture as much from that strategic plan around living and caring in affordable communities. So we tried to get the big picture from that and pull from that, but if you look into that strategic plan on the county side... But if you look into that strategic plan on the county side for economic success, it goes into more details around that. And again, it doesn't limit us from being able to discuss further.
I am seeing under Number 1, our economic development policies that promote wealth creation, that's fine, but it doesn't really say anything about making sure that we create real opportunities across the spectrum and across every part of our county.
Ms. Evans, might I suggest you may, prior to the voting on this, perhaps suggest some language that then you can share with your colleagues, and I would be happy to work with you on that, because that is a great concern of mine as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's a good point. So as Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders said a minute ago, that what she was going to ask is for both board, for this board to say, what are the areas that she would like both the County Board of Supervisors and the School Board to really focus on, some more specific areas? And I think Item 4, Section 4, Number 2, is the bigger picture, but I would pull what you're describing, Ms. Evans, is if it's something that the full board here wanted to vote on and put on that list, I think that would help direct that conversation, because it is encompassed under Number 2. But to your point, Ms. Evans, it's a little bigger picture of that. So it connects back to what you were saying, Ms. Corbett Sanders, in terms of your request to have those specific items outlined.
Well, perhaps some of us could work together either on language to amend it and/or, you know, it could be and include.
I think amending it would be difficult, again, because it comes directly out of that document, and we try to keep the words from the actual source documents, which you see on the attachment. So I would encourage, but it's obviously your decision, but I would encourage to do what Ms. Corbett Sanders suggested earlier, which was to actually outline the listing of what those areas would be for focus, rather than amending the actual policy itself.
I'll work with Ms. Darnett Kofax and Ms. Corbett Sanders and anyone else who is interested in contributing to.
A follow-on motion that allows us to prioritize in the near term housing patterns, perhaps access to transportation, things like that.
Exactly.
Right, but again, not limited, just to.
Right, not limited to the mixed use.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and that was my only question. And I, Madam Chair or Madam Meeting Manager, I'm just going to run upstairs for a minute and then come back down, because I had a meeting, too.
We have Ms. Palchuk yet.
Thank you. I will try to be brief, and I really appreciate all the work you've done on this and county staff as well. A few questions for that one. I don't know if I understood correctly, but when we were looking at Number 1, community and economic development policies and programs, this would be an area, I understand, I may not need to be specifically mentioned, but kind of understanding the role of government and the role of the private or nonprofit sectors. So is this implying, or does it need to be more clear, that these policies and programs will also be in collaboration with the business community and nonprofit sector? At our last Schools Committee meeting, we were told that the EDA is only focused on filling office space right now, I think to the surprise of many of us in that room. So I guess I'm wondering if that needs, if that is implied, that it's not just the government will create policies and programs?
Yeah, it's actually embedded in there, because you'll see the local source it comes from is the Small Business Commission, the Economic Development Authority, and the Housing Blueprint. So it's actually embedded in that actual work. So the statement we pulled out might appear, kind of again, high level, but if you go back to the source documents where they come from, it's not just implied, it's embedded in that.
Okay, okay. That's good to know. Thank you. And on, I guess more on our side of things, the bigger picture, and I'm sorry if I missed it, I went up to see our Hispanic Leadership Alliance meeting briefly, but Dr. Braybrand, do you and Dr. Duran have a plan or action, or when we will be able to see on the school side, how we want to, and I made it very clear, I think, when we added this work to Dr. Duran's plea, that we didn't ensure that there was funding and an office that could work with him on doing this work?
I love Fairfax County Public Schools. I do. This is great. No.
And your graduates.
No, it's great, because it's parallel thinking, and it's, there's, I've loved today hearing questions and conversations that are actually paralleling the same thing. We revised Dr. Duran's job responsibilities, and Dr. Lockard and I, I believe the meeting is this week, are having a full sit-down to go down line by line, what are the things that we want to have as deliverables in this new position and with this new lens? Dr. Duran also made it clear when we, when I first approached him about this opportunity, that he would like to, while we threw a lens of effectiveness, it was my decision that I didn't think we needed an assistant superintendent. Do we need resources that would target or advance the work that we're doing? And we haven't had those conversations yet. So we're really just about to have that this week. He already mentioned to you something that is going to be coming out, which is this notion of an equity scorecard. It's got to happen. We've got to have it. Lots of other divisions have already gone out, and we may want to bring some drafts, just like we bring a calendar to sort of let you not have to start from scratch, but see, you like this, you want more of that. But I think that will help us drive. It's almost like what Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders was saying about in this Fairfax One, what are the areas you want to concentrate on? Well, we need a scorecard that really has us focused on, what are the data points where we don't see equity as well as we need to? So we're about to work on it, and we'll have more to share in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, I appreciate that, because even though I didn't want to speak again to this point in the last presentation, I'm very concerned about the drop in our test scores, you know, it's our only data point right now for Hispanic population. And so I do hope that we're not just building this beautiful policy, but that we are planning on how to address that.
And let me just say that on test scores, I didn't, we didn't really get into it in times gone up. Dr. Lockard has done some great work already with our folks. We are drilling down on data for our schools based on performance and poverty and looking at who's beating poverty and who isn't. And Dr. Lockard is already working with the Regional Assistant Superintendents. Part of their goal-setting will be about their ability to move those schools above the line with supports from our departments. But we're going to drill a lot more on data. Every child by name, by need, every school, really by name and by need, and that means at the leadership team level, we need to be focused on data that drives down to specific schools and specific students. That's really what I hear some of your conversations being, and we're in the process of doing that. But Regional Assistant Superintendents already have a list of their schools that are outperforming poverty and those that are underperforming poverty. So we really are starting to put the focus on that, and then we may see some additional strategies that come from that. But we've heard really today in Project Momentum, some of the ideas that work, we just have to scale them. There's more schools that need to benefit from those strategies than just the ones already identified.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your work, and I'm very happy to support this. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss, a quick go-back.
Very quick go-back. I agree, I think, an add-on resolution. And again, Carla, thank you, I mean, you've been here since the very beginning, and it worked so, what, two years? We've taken us on this journey? I think so. So it's helpful to have you here, five years, I don't know, forever. But it is, it is creating neighborhoods, because we believe in community schools and neighborhood schools as much as possible. And we are continually frustrated by heavy concentrations of intense poverty in large areas, large geographic areas. And even as we look at redevelopment, which is really very exciting, there are a lot of opportunities to do things differently, but I have to be real honest, I continue to see either very expensive studio or one-bedroom apartments, which will not house families. And so again, it is the lens of equity for families that actually create a community and not just a very expensive high-rise, which over time, they're going to have a hard time filling anyway. But I agree, I think we'll work on something to challenge the Board of Supervisors to give us real communities and real neighborhoods that provide good quality of life for everybody. So. And, Mrs. Schultz, I have the other side of it. I also have communities that have no sidewalks, that have no sewers, but they don't want sewers. But also, we have the large class sizes, et cetera, et cetera. So, same side. But at any rate, thank you for all of your work, and I think this will help to push us, I hope, in directions that will provide for better quality of life for everybody. So thanks.
I'm hopeful as well. So thank you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for this very long day. All of my colleagues who hung it out to the end, all five of us, we get all gold stars. So thank you. Have a good evening.